And you guys are live.
Thank you. Good morning. I call to order the planning board for Thursday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The first item on our agenda are the minutes of June ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any questions or corrections? If not, then I would entertain a motion. I'm sorry. If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve, to have that motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. The next item is the Little Plain subdivision at eighty-nine Apicuaque Road. Is the applicant present?
Um, yes, we are here.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And can you just explain your application to us to bring us up to date? I know there's been changes since the beginning of this, two thousand nine, I believe.
Yes. So we represent lot number three in the subdivision. The owner, it's eighty-nine Apicuaque Road. Um, our client has been looking to develop the property and during our research, we looked into the prior CNRs of this subdivision. And in that, and in the boards of prior approval, the board restricted the all buildings within an envelope, a building envelope that's depicted on the map.
Right.
Um, since that subdivision, the village has changed how it looks at accessory structures, whereas prior to, I believe it was two thousand seventeen, there weren't setback requirements for these structures. In two thousand seventeen, however, the board adopted setback for accessory structures and buildings. And so the, we are currently requesting that the subdivision approval from two thousand and ten be modified to allow us to use the current code requirements rather than be restricted by the accessory structure, by the building envelopes that are depicted on the map. It's our understanding that the village has actually been applying the setbacks that are in the code rather than the building envelope that was from a prior application and development on lot, I believe it's lot one in that subdivision. So we're just, our hope is to actually modify the subdivision, go by the code, and make it a more uniform application, and then therefore avoid any issues down the line for any of the future property owners and for the village. And so that is what our request is, basically.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, do you have any comments on this, on this application?
I think Elizabeth clearly explained it. We just wanted to have the subdivision adhere to current zoning code requirements for accessory and principal as opposed to the building envelopes that were adopted as part of the subdivision in two thousand and ten.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Tom Perato, your input on this application?
Thanks, Robert. Beth put it quite nicely. And I think it's more of a, what do I want to say, a bookkeeping or a, just a straightening, straightening out the records. I think it would be acceptable to use what we have as far as the setbacks and that they didn't need to be any more restrictive than what we have.
Thank you, Tom. And Billy, hey, Jack, your analysis, input?
Morning, Robert, to the board. Historically, when the planning board has always had a hard time modifying prior planning board approvals, it's just been kind of a policy to not go back and revisit old planning board approvals. And in this case, though, I think I would encourage the board to consider that there's, I think, a change of circumstances. As Beth indicated, the code now allows for accessory structure setbacks, which didn't apply at the time the subdivision was created. In addition to which, when the subdivision was completed, the village had a very unusual way for calculating the relief provisions, the setback relief provisions. And these building envelopes were drawn in a way to utilize those setback relief provisions, which no longer apply. So there's, you know, it makes it a little bit complicated for somebody to develop the lot when, you know, there's a building envelope which no longer really pertains to current zoning requirements. So I personally don't have an objection if the board were to just provide, you know, require or eliminate the covenant regarding the building envelope and just allow lots to be developed pursuant to current zoning. So the board understands the, the average setback, I'd say, for a principal building shown on this lot on the map is about forty-four, forty-five feet. The applying current zoning would actually increase the setback for principal buildings. So it would move them more internally into lots, which I don't think is such a bad thing. The setback would be fifty-five feet, and it would relax setbacks for swimming pools, patios, and the like. So, you know, accessory setbacks could be moved closer to the property line, but the principal buildings, the bigger buildings, would be moved inward. So I, I think that's more consistent with probably the pattern of development in the neighborhood anyway.
Okay.
So that's really my opinion on the, you know, on the request. The one item I'd like to just point out to the board's attention and the applicant's attention is that there were conditions of the subdivision which required clearing of some vegetation to create a view shed across the field. Part of the field is a view, a view shed easement. And the idea was to try to maximize the view from people passing by on Apicuaque Road. And that area hasn't been cleared yet, so that needs to be cleared. And then also on Lily Pond Lane, as you come around the hard bend, there was an area where that was to be cleared to sort of improve the view over the pond and towards the, the reserve area. And that area hasn't been cleared. So I just think, you know, for housekeeping, I think the applicant has to get, get started on that, or the applicants, I guess the homeowners association, I think need to, you know, get that in order and, and clear those areas.
Well, yes. Thank you, Billy. Yes, I do agree with that analysis because the, the area down there is just so beautiful that you don't, we don't want, that you can't see anything. And, you know, and all the views would be obstructed. So I agree with that analysis. Walker, your opinion about this application?
It seems fine to me, now that it's been explained.
Thank you. And David, you have any questions or concerns?
I have a question. I don't fully understand a couple of things. I'm, well, as, as like Billy, I'm, you know, I'm always a little resistant to changing a previous board's determination, you know? At the time, apparently, there was, there was no, there was no regulation. And the board, the planning board obviously decided that there was a need for regulation. So the regulation was expressed in the covenant restriction, and it was agreed upon. And then ten years later, apparently, it's less restrictive now. So we're gonna look to change it. So, you know, just on the, on the face of it, without the additional information, I'm a little hesitant. But I'd just like to understand. I, I think this was about accessory buildings, not principal buildings, more than anything else, was it not? Or, or, because the principal buildings always would have to be within the building envelope, correct?
Billy, do you want to?
Yes. Yeah, but they, you're, by applying the current zoning setbacks, you're actually creating more, you know, you're, the buildings are, the setback is becoming greater for principal buildings.
Yeah, that, that, you know what? I couldn't read the, the survey.
Yeah, I know. It's hard to see.
I kind of tried to really look at it, but I couldn't. I'm blinded a little bit. But if you, Billy, if you could just explain to me the difference between the restrictions as expressed in the covenant and restrictions as opposed to the current village code for accessory buildings, what are the setbacks?
So the, so the required setbacks for a principal building, the front yard doesn't change. It's eighty feet. The building envelopes were eighty feet back from the road. The current principal building setback is eighty feet. It's even greater for an accessory structure. So becomes more restrictive, eliminating the building envelope. The side yard setbacks for a principal building are fifty-five feet. And on average, these building envelopes have side yards of like forty-five feet. So the principal building setback becomes, I guess, more restrictive, you could say. The accessory structures, the setback is twenty, well, it'll be twenty feet for most accessory structures, forty feet for like a swimming pool, a pool house, and the like. So that is not much of a change between, you know, the swimming pool setback and what the building envelope shows.
For accessory, it's twenty feet, right? Or whatever.
Yeah.
And the building envelope is how far off, off that same line?
Forty, forty-five feet.
Okay.
On average. They, you know, some are forty-four, some are like forty-three, some are
So that's a big change, yeah.
Yeah. So they're all, they all differ, you know, where this makes it more uniform, you know, everybody's on an even playing field, so to speak.
And from the property owner's perspective, it's much less restrictive for accessory buildings, and that's why it's preferable to them. That's why the application is coming forward.
Possibly, yeah. I can tell you, I mean, I have experience with the subdivision. And the building envelopes, I, I don't want to say it was inadvertent, but I don't think there was intent. It's, it's complicated, but I, when this subdivision was approved, I was involved with it. And the, the building envelopes were added to the map because the, at one point, the then-village planning consultant had suggested the potential for creating view sheds through the built, you know, through each lot. So that if you were driving down Apicuaque Road, you would almost, you know, you'd almost have a view shed through each lot. And so we plotted the building envelopes. Through the course of many, many reviews, this was an ongoing subdivision for quite a long time, it was resolved that it was almost, it was not possible to do, and nor did the village planning board think it was reasonable. And for whatever reason, we left the building envelopes on the map, and they got incorporated into the covenants and restrictions. So, you know, I, I don't know if there was like a direct intent for that to happen, but.
And is there a possibility that this change to the, the current village code will somehow inhibit the view shed going forward if buildings are put into places that weren't?
No, the view sheds that have to be maintained are in the easements. They're, they're, the lots are pretty burdened with scenic easements and view shed easements, and there, no structures are permitted in either. So, and in fact, vegeta, even, it even limits the height of vegetation within the view shed easement.
And I, I seem to remember reading something in the paperwork that there were pretty strict timelines on when the land, the non-native vegetation must be removed. There was a time restriction for the DEC permit application and the notification deal with that. And then within one year, it was supposed to have been cleared. Was that done originally?
The, well, I, I know that they received their permit, because I secured it for them. And then the family had never opted to do the actual work, because they were not going to build on the lots. The, the plan was that they weren't going to develop the property for quite some time, so they just left it, left it alone. But they have removed all the fragmites on the, I guess it'd be like the north side of the pond, and they've done a really good job at controlling the fragmites, and that's dramatically changed, you know, the vista. That, just that alone, which was not necessarily required, but it has dramatically changed, and it, it looks nice.
Yeah. It is quite beautiful, that area.
Yeah. View shed along Apicuaque Road is, it's a, it's a pretty small, it's a narrow window. It's only about forty or fifty feet wide. And it's just going to give people a glimpse as they drive by. It's, I think the, the area on Lily Pond Lane is, is going to have more impact, but it's a little bit more complicated because it's a wetland. They have to obtain wetland permits, and so it's, there's more involved in it, you know?
Thank you for dropping.
Okay. Well, thank you. Vincent Messina, are you here with us?
I am.
Hi, Vincent, how are you?
Good. Ms. Perillo did the handoff, so you slid down. I'm sorry about that, but.
That's okay.
It's great to see Beth again. It's been a long time.
How are you?
I'm awesome. Thank you. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Vincent, how do you, what is your opinion about this application? And how do you see it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't add anything that, that Bill didn't. You know, I know I did come in a little late, but no, I, I don't see any issue with this.
Okay. So then we can take a vote on it. Now, Vincent, should we, about the clearing of the vegetation, do we have to put a statement about that if we approve this application? What should we state?
Bill, did you make a recommendation on this with respect to that?
Not specifically. I just, I just noted that it hasn't been done yet, and it should be done. So I don't know, whatever.
So then we could make it subject to the recommendations of the planner with respect to that issue.
Okay, so let's put that in writing then. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm sorry. I don't.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth?
I just want to clarify. We would respectfully request, we, we totally understand that the clearing issue has to be dealt with, with this subdivision, and we're more than happy to help shepherd it through, through all, not only the homeowners association and, and everybody else, but we, we just respect, or respectfully request that it be not prior to a building permit, if that's what the board is looking at, but rather tie it to prior to any COs being issued, just to allow us to start.
That's tough. That's tough, because then you get your improvement. And even if you don't get a CO, it's up and it's, and you have, you know, you have what you've requested, right?
Yeah.
So, um.
Yes.
Do you, I mean, if you want, we can adjourn and work out specific, you know, a specific requirement that you might be happy with, and then we can give you a vote with no contingencies except, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, procedurally here, I think if the board agrees, is generally in agreement with eliminating, eliminating the building envelopes, I think the applicant, you're representing one property owner, so you have some work to do, because you have to amend, you actually have to amend the covenant. And then you have to have the homeowners association and all the lot owners agree. So perhaps in that time, we can look at the, the clearing matter a little bit closer and try to figure out a, a strategy on how that could be completed while you're, you know, working this out with, with the homeowners. Because even if the board, I mean, they're not really approving anything. At the end, they're going to, you know, accept a revised covenant, right?
Right. We're approving the application.
Yeah.
Right. You'll, you'll be, you would have to amend the, the board's approval. And also then, we would then in turn be going to all the different property owners to get, which we've already spoken to. And they know that this is.
Okay.
What's, what's expected. So we would be modifying, you know, the pertinent documents. I think it's the CNRs to, to, and then having each property owner sign off on that. We just, we're trying to coordinate this for everybody. And there's already been development where we're, obviously need, we understand what needs to be done. But the, as you had said before, the reserve area is, there's a lot going on there. We want to start our process and not be held up by that. The board has issued permits for this, or the town, is it, village has issued permits already. We just, we're trying to coordinate everybody, and we want to make sure that we're not getting held up for that. We're ready to go. And so we really want to not only address the board's concerns and the village's concerns, but also get all of the property owners involved again, and get the homeowners association involved. And, and it's going to obviously be a process to do. And we just want to kind of run our building permit application and everything simultaneously with that.
You, Beth, you can apply. I, I mean, Tom, you can correct me, but you can make the application, and we can have it all teed up for approval as soon as this is buttoned up. I mean, they can all run on a, on a parallel path.
That, that could, yes, that certainly could happen. But I'm just going forward, you know, what am I, what, what are we to expect as far as the actual plan that we have, you know, the, the subdivision plan, and, and how much of that gets changed, or?
Oh, the map.
The map itself, or is it, you know, is it going to be on individual surveys, I wouldn't think, for each? I, I just don't know how it's, I mean, it sounds good, but I think there's a little.
I don't think it's the map.
That's a good question. The map does have meets and bounds on the building envelopes.
Right. But I think that, I think that CNRs can just say, you know, they're not, they're not referencing it, you know, or we could say that it's not required to, you know, if, if you want to put it in the affirmative. But the, the CNR specifically reference the building envelopes that they have to be, if that language is no longer there, then even if there's still description.
Right. It's just difficult to, and, and, you know, I am for this, as you know, but it just, my position is difficult to issue, you know, a building permit for property that, you know, that would be on this map. I'm not sure, procedurally, that would be probably more something that you and Vincent, and, and perhaps Billy could make, make happen. I don't, I just, you know, want to be sure that it goes smooth, smoothly as well.
Can I also say something with regard to the, the removal and the clearing work? When I got involved in this project, it was the client that already purchased the property and everything. And Tom, you know, we met with you, and we found lot number one had benefited by, from use of the current zoning. So really, I, I feel Beth and I are here as a housekeeping and also to help everybody and clear this up with the village. For the clearing right now, we have to stake out the area on Apicuaque. So that, as you know, if you do any, I'm sure Billy knows this, getting surveyors and everything out there is, is very difficult right now. A fragmites removal is better to be undertaken in the winter. We're going to need not just a, a village permit, we need a DEC permit. The DEC right now is understaffed. They've lost most of the technical review people over the last six months. I foresee this is going to take us, could take us six months to a year to get the permits and to do the work. So that's what we thought, if we can at least go for, have the building permit issued, and we have this contingent on a certificate of occupancy. Of course, our clients, we always don't want our people to move in before a CFO. But this house, on these properties, this is going to take a few years for construction anyways. This isn't a house that's going to be thrown up in six months and CFO'd. So that's why we thought, having it conditioned, getting the subdivision cleaned up before the issuance of certificate of occupancy was reasonable, because it's going to take us at least two years of construction. And it's going to take us a while to get everybody's sign on and get the DEC to get issued a permit to do this work.
Understood, but I, I just need to feel okay with giving a permit. I didn't give the last permits. And I do understand that they, they were relaxed. If there's a mechanism through which I can do it and, and be assured that we have the proper outcome, you know, legally, I'm totally for this.
Vincent, what is your recommendation about moving forward with this? I realize that the clearing, I think, is important, that we have that all in place. Sort of, for me, I think it's important to have the clearing in place before we grant, you know, a building permit. I don't know.
I, I think you're right, Mr. Chairman, and that's been our practice recently in any number of contexts, you know, as, as Bill and Tom can both attest, you know, in front of other bodies. So, you know, the, the best thing, and, and, you know, everyone here, I'm sure, acts in good faith. We can work, like I said, on parallel paths with the applicant, where we can take in the building permit application, we can start to take a look at, or anything that they may need from the building department, and at the same time, work on what we need to do with respect to the clearing and the covenants or agreements with respect to the clearing. So that would be my recommendation, but it's, again, entirely up to the board.
Thank you. My, my main concern is that people do exactly what, you know, the, the proper thing. And these things all do take time. We understand where the applicant is coming from. But I really think that we have to be very careful about the building, about the clearing. I think that's an important aspect. Billy, what, what is your opinion about this in general?
I just, I, listen, I think the work has to be done at some point. You know, I'll defer to the, you know.
Yeah.
Minnie and Tom as to what they think the appropriate timing of this is. I mean, I.
Also, Billy, sorry. Ironically, I am meeting with an architect regarding another one of these properties on Monday. So timing wise, it just happens to be so, so we want to have it down, and we want to have, be obviously consistent.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, you know, the, the clearing that's required on lot five, it's a small little area. It won't take, I mean, it's not going to amount to a lot of work.
Yeah.
You know, I don't even know if you need a surveyor to stake it out, quite frankly. You could probably just.
It's within the, it's within the DEC jurisdiction, though.
Yeah.
It's a farm field that we're, you're removing, you're removing a private hedge along a farm field.
Somebody come over after us about demolishing a house, and, and about, did they say anything within their jurisdiction they wanted me to?
That's, that's within a hundred feet of the.
I, I believe, I don't have it in front of me. I thought it was, but I'll check it.
Okay, I'm eyeballing it. It doesn't look like a hundred feet to me, but, you know, I don't know. That's.
Again, it's not our, and the other thing is too, the reason I wanted to have it staked out is right now, it's, we have to contact the property owner. It's not our property. So we'd have to have it. I would recommend to anybody, any property owner, you want to stake it out before you start clearing.
So, anyway, I don't know. I'm just trying to come up with a, a compromise solution, but that's fine.
Well, Billy, did they, the DEC permit, if, if you handled the permit before, do you know how long that permit was good for? Could we transfer what the Williams family had before?
I haven't looked at it since then, so it's probably, I'm guessing it was a five-year permit, but I don't know. You'd have to, it's in the, it's, I know it's in the file, but I haven't looked at it.
Vincent, I, I sort of feel, and Billy and Tom, I, I sort of feel like we should have the vegetation thing all settled before we go ahead and issue a building permit. Do you guys concur? What?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So why did the applicant, why didn't you go ahead and, why didn't you proceed to do a clearing and, and come back and then apply for a, a, a building permit at that, or certification of this at that time? Why don't we go ahead and follow the guidelines? Sorry, Billy.
I mean, yeah, if I can just clarify, the board is not, you know, you're not authorizing building permits being issued. I mean.
No, no.
But I think what, if you're, if the board is, procedurally here, if the board is okay with modifying the covenant, I think the applicant can go ahead and work on, you know, getting together whatever doc, you know, documentation needs to be completed.
Yes.
And then submitting that to the board for, for review and take it from there.
And we understand that, that Tom is saying that he's not going to be issuing his permit because the clearing's not in conformance with the.
But then, again, I think, but back to what I originally suggested, is that we can approve it subject to the clearing permit. No building permits are going to be issued, the clearing language, rather, with respect to any covenant modification, subject to Billy and I. Does that work for you, Beth?
Yes.
Okay. And it still preserves that there will be no building permits issued until such?
Or you could be silent on the building permit issue and just leave it up to Tom.
We don't mind giving Tom a little backup. I know he likes that. So, Mr. Chairman, the motion that would be to approve the, the application here, subject to the approval of the village planner and the village attorney, and that, you know, no building permits will be issued until such time as the clearing agreement or modification is made.
Thank you so much, Vincent. That's perfectly put. So why don't we take a vote on this then? Do I have a motion to approve, subject to these conditions?
I got one, one last question.
Oh, okay, David.
Just a, a point that I'm a little confused on. And I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have the paragraph in front of me that addresses the view shed removal of the grasses. But my understanding of it was that the homeowners association would be required as an association to do the clearing of. uh, would be required as an association to do the clearing across the land development. And, and, and I think we're approaching it as a property by property requirement by each individual property owner. So, um, i- is it property by property or is it across the development with the homeowners association handling that internal?
It's the homeowners association that's responsible for the clearing.
Right. So it's not like you can do your property and then you're, you're good to go and the rest of the property uh, is, is, is no removal.
It's going to be, the applications for the various jurisdictions will be made by the homeowners association and the work will be performed by the homeowners association. Which we don't represent, you know, we're just one property owner right now, so um, that would all have to be coordinated to get everybody involved.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I, Beth, who represents the HOA? Is it, you don't know? Is Trevor involved in this?
Um, I know the um, the HOA is uh, Eugene Williams is the, for process. Servants is uh, care of Eugene Williams in St. Louis. I believe that's one of the family members for the Williams family who did the original subdivision.
Okay.
Um,
I, I don't believe he's living.
So then I don't know.
That was the only reason I was mentioning about the CFO is I think it's going to take some time and we have new property owners, the, the guy next door, like Tom's going to meet, was just purchased too. So there's going to be a lot of people we have to sign up and everything and frankly, our client is ready to submit for a building permit in the next two months. They've been working on this for about almost a year now. So um, that's why I kind of feel like we're being held to hold it through no fault of our own anyway. I mean, this clearly wasn't done.
That's not true. And the flip side is that you do your improvement and then nobody follows up on anything and the village is the one holding the bag and it's just, that's just not going to. You have nothing to guarantee performance on your side and except we make a contingent on something. Okay, so you, I, I sympathize with you, but our job is to protect the village and to make sure this gets done. And, you know, your clients can fire you all tomorrow and the village is still going to be here and then we're left holding the bag. So that's why it has to be this way.
That's right. And, and I believe Vincent Messina has a perfect point. It's like you, you know, people will promise you anything and then what's going to happen is they're going to do what they please and then you have five lots of people doing whatever they want to do. And it could take, it could take the village a long, long time to get this under control. Uh, I don't think that's a good idea. I think we should start out on a level playing field and I think that we should all take into consideration the importance of the village that we all live in and we all love and not go ahead to a single person or a five lots. We have to all be on the same playing field and the same playing field says to me that the vegetation should all be cleared and we should have it all, everything properly documented in that regard and then a building permit could be issued for that particular property.
All right, Mr. Chairman, do you want to make, you want to adopt the motion that I had previously placed on the record?
Yes, let's uh, adopt, if you like, let, board members, let's uh, vote on that. Uh, do we approve the motion set forth? Do I have a, do I have a uh,
Can we, can we repeat the motion?
Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve? Board members?
So move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a little confused as to exactly what we're approving at this point. I forgive me.
So the motion is to give relief from the covenant.
Right.
Subject to the approval of the village planner and the village attorney. And that no building permits be issued until such time as that agreement is in place.
Okay, that, that's fine.
Okay. So, so Walker, you second, you second?
I, I second, yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let that, Vincent, that'll go into the record and um.
Absolutely. We'll draft a resolution.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions? Or concerns? Okay. If there are not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
David, thank you. All in favor? Okay. See you at the next meeting.
Have a great day, everybody.